Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, July 16th, 2024 Tumwater City Council meeting. We will start with roll call.
Councilmember Leette Adalhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
Present.
All right, with that, we will do the flag salute. Join me in our salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our next item is public comment. Do I have anyone signed up for public comment? Great, I have a couple people signed up. I have Chris Potowski. Is that, I'm, I'm sorry, I feel bad when I mispronounce people's names.
That's all right. It's not an easy one.
Name and address in three minutes.
Sure. My name is Chris Kowalski. I live at 908 Delta Lane in Tumwater. And I am here because, one, to thank you for your hard work that you're doing on this beautiful summer night. But I wanted just to remind you that the people who would like to save the deepest meager Gary Oak are still out here. And we still would like to thank you for considering the additional assessment. But we would like to, I would like to tell you that I would like you guys to be committed to saving this tree. I would love to see an ordinance in our laws that say that the tree should not be removed without a waiver from the Historic Preservation Commission, a permit from the Washington State Archaeology and Historic Preservation Department, and consensus of three arborists who say that there's absolutely nothing else that could be done for this tree except to kill it. I ask that the arborists that will respond to your RFQ that you guys graciously put out last week, or last meeting, oh, be fairly evaluated and really special notice to be based on their experience with this tree, because these type of trees are rare, they're indigenous to our area, and we should have people weighing in on the health and welfare of this tree who know what they're talking about. And then I would like to say that I want you to listen to your advisory groups, because when I go back and look at the history, the tree board said, "We don't want to remove this tree." Your Historic Preservation Commission said many times, "We don't want it to list it." So I think that in the, you are asking people to give their time to give you advice, you should take that advice. And I think you could work with your citizens to look for a creative solution that saves this tree and many trees. I want you to recall the meeting where we all came out, over a hundred people made comments, and their presence known, and their feelings about this tree. And think about the breadth of experience of those people, and how quickly a good working group could have been put together with arborists and statisticians and librarians and gardeners, and many, many more. And I want to remind you that the people that live in York area, York City, work for the government, and we know how it works. So you're looking at a, really, a bunch of citizens with a lot of expertise. And we're experienced and prepared and really want to help. So we really wanted you guys to save this tree. We want you to save it for our children and our children's children. And then, hey, because I was at the last city council meeting, and I'm an urban planner by trade, I just want to say that I personally have a strong propensity toward redevelopment instead of green development. So I would like you to look, have direct your community center consultants to consider some out-of-the-box solutions to where to put the community center. For example, we all know that the Costco will still be, soon be moving to down by 93rd. Well, that big building is perfect for a community center. What are you going to do with it? It's ginormous, it's strong, it's structurally sound, and it's walking distance from the high school, the middle school, and Black Hills High School is on the bus route. So it'd be good if you guys would look to more creative out-of-the-box solutions, and thanks again.
Thank you. I think two people signed up on one line, Angelo Ferrer.
I thought that, I thought everybody had to sign in, so that was just a sign-in sheet.
You're not required if you don't want to.
No, I have something that was on my mind. I'm Angelo Fazio, 3217 Capitol Boulevard. It's close to the intersection of Capitol and Cleveland by Safeway. And my concerns for years has been the traffic speed on Capitol. Coming from Olympia at 25, and then all of a sudden you got free rain. It's 35 posted, but people go faster. Any consideration on getting that lowered until you hit Custer, because it's more commercial there? And the other part is that new revision at Cleveland coming from Safeway. Many cars, once a month, I see tire tracks dirt askew on the sidewalk, that cars have missed that turn. Could be a pedestrian there one day, I hope not, but maybe a little more alertness to that area? Yellow painted curb or a flashing sign at the stop sign. People kind of stop and go, they're just ready to go, you know? That's my general concern, is the traffic in that zone or right across street from where I live, but thank you.
Thank you. All right, Lori, Laura, okay, perfect. I just want to make sure. All right, anyone else? Do we have anyone signed up online?
We have one online, Pamela Hanson.
Okay, going ahead.
Hello there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi there. I was going to show up at the meeting, but I decided to take one of the TV cameras and boom mics to the tree. So I'm just standing here waiting, and I can hear a little bit of noise from the three little kestrels, but nothing has flown out. The tree looks so gorgeous tonight in the light. There is new growth coming out of the nest hole, and it's amazing looking at the side view of where the kestrels are, the way the nest stands proud outside of the tree. So that one branch that goes straight up is actually growing, and the nest is like a knot hole with new growth growing out of it. Just a gorgeous tree. And I appreciate everyone's comments and echo their feelings. I would also like to note that I attended via Zoom the pre-board meeting, and it was very interesting, it was very fun to watch. City Administrator Lisa Parks was there. So there's two things out of that meeting that I would like to bring to your attention. There's a document, and I don't have it in front of me out here on the side of the road. But I was looking at it, and it's one of the developments, and it shows one tree being saved is counted as two, and it is not one of the older trees on the lot, it's one of the younger trees. So immediately, being from a logger's family here in Washington State, I'm thinking, well, the owner kind of wants to log the older, larger trees for more money for his development, and is going to save the smaller tree, but how the heck does that math work where one tree equals two trees saved? So there's that question. Then there is the other question that was brought up through a transition in the conversation, and that was the pocket gopher. So there's pocket gopher protected areas, and there is a piece of land over by Black Hills High School that's being looked at to mitigate the current pocket gopher land. And my question, but Lisa, City Administrator Lisa Parks had already left. My question is, with the $4 million that's already raised for that, is that piece of land up for sale? Or is it just being looked at by the city as being up for sale? And is there a sale agreement in the works? And it would be nice if city council would put together some maps and let us know what's going on with the current pocket gopher situation. Because I think everyone can realize that we're concerned about kestrels, we're concerned about wildlife, we're concerned about trees.
Three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else online?
No one else.
Okay, so is there anyone in the council chambers that would take a public comment? All right, with that, we will now move to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar? And hold on, let me turn on microphones. All right, a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, with that, we have approved the minutes of the city council meeting work session from May 28th. Approval of the minutes of the city council and Joint Planning Commission work session of June 25th. Approval of the minutes of the July 2nd city council meeting. Payment vouchers, an inter-agency agreement reimbursement agreement, IAA 225301 between Washington State Administrative Offices of the Court and the City of Tumwater. Homeland Security Region 3 Ombudsman's Mutual Aid Agreement. That came from Public Health and Safety as well as the agreement with the court. Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Tumwater and the Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis Reservation. That was approved at the work session. Israel Road and Linderson Way Pedestrian and Bike Improvement Project Authority to Solicit Bids and Recommend Award. That came from Public Works Committee. Linwood Avenue Sidewalk to sustain a lane to Second Avenue, Authority to Solicit Bids and Recommend Awards. And that also came from the Public Works Committee. So with that, we're moving to council consideration. The first item is the 2024 Citywide Striping Project Construction Contract Award with Specialized Pavement Markings. And I think, Mary Heather, are you doing that one? Great.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This evening, I have the chance to present an item that might normally be handled by Public Works Committee. So I'm excited for the opportunity to talk to you as a larger group. Tonight, I'm introducing an upcoming project and asking that you authorize the mayor to sign a contract for its construction. The project is our 2024 Citywide Striping. This covers all roads within Tumwater, maintaining painted lines. So those are the yellow and white lines that guide us as we drive. There's about 105 miles of the four-inch paint line corresponding to the 554,000 linear feet. And there's just over 33 miles of eight-inch wide paint line corresponding to that 175,000. Of course, nothing in life is free. So our estimated construction cost, we had a range of 130,000 to 150,000. And the funding is provided by the Streets Operating Budget. This is definitely a maintenance-type item. Staff used the small works roster process to solicit quotes, and they were received on July 3, weeks ago, and Specialized Pavement Markings LLC was the respondent, and was the quote that matched our needs. It's in an amount of $136,933.50. And moving forward, we're looking at construction starting in early August, and it's an eight-working-days project. And this is a really great time to talk about how this work gets done. It's a moving operation. So the signs and traffic control move with the truck doing the work. Drivers are advised not to change lanes because there will be wet paint. But this is something that we do yearly, so it's a, it's a standard operation for us. And you may want a little note of history. So in the past, from about 2008 to 2020, we were able to accomplish our striping contracts through inter-local agreements with Lewis and Thurston Counties. Things changed in 2020, I think you might remember. But there was a whole thing about being able to get materials. So we ended up having to change the way we accomplished this, moving to a small works contract. So we did that for a couple years. Last year, we were able to tie the striping into our citywide pavement maintenance project. And then this year, we're back again with it as a separate project. So little history moment for you, which brings us to the reason that I'm here, which is to request that you authorize the mayor to sign a public works contract with Specialized Pavement Marking LLC of Pacific Washington in the amount of $136,933.50 for the 2024 Citywide Striping Project.
Okay. Start with questions, Councilmember Adalhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Heather, I'm totally in support of this. I was just wondering, going back to Angelo's comment. When we have these issues, like with safety and like painting curbs, is that part of, I never remember, is that part of contracting out, or is that, like, your department will go out specifically to those areas? Because another, is an email I sent like last month about 70th and Low Rock, the sidewalks. Are those elements part of this work, or are they separate?
This is long-line striping only. So something like curbs or even crosswalk markings, those are separate.
Got it.
This is purely the, the long, straight lines that go along with the lanes of travel.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I would entertain a motion.
So I move that for a minute. I move.
You want to put that back up? Oh, Councilmember Swarthout, did you have a question before we have the motion, or?
No, I was going to make the motion, but that's okay.
Okay.
I move that we're to resume here to sign a public work construction with our specialized pavement marking LLC of Pacific Washington in the amount of $136,933.50 for the 2020 citywide striping project.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so it's been moved by Councilmember Agabe, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much. And I take it you're going to be doing the next hangout, which is the Deschutes Valley Connection Funding Prospectus and Award, and Mary Heather will be presenting that.
Well, good evening again. This presentation is regarding the Deschutes Valley Trail and funding this multi-use trail project. I imagine that most people in this room are familiar, but so that, so that we're all on the same page, here's a refresher of the Deschutes Valley Trail. It's a multi-use trail that goes through Tumwater, connecting the historical park to Pioneer Park along the western edge of the golf course. It's over two miles in length, and we've been working on constructing it in segments. The northernmost segment was completed already, and this is a picture of it. You can see the Tumwater Falls, the completed trail. And this was completed, I believe, two years ago. Might have been one year. So moving forward, we have received some funding through the legislature. It's connecting Washington funding, and it's through their pedestrian and bicycle program. And they've given us $1 million within the 23 to 25 biennium with another 4.8 coming in the 25 to 27 biennium. So this money requires fund authorization to be able to start spending this money. And fund authorization through WashDOT, it involves submitting a packet of paperwork that says, "We know what we're doing. We know how much we expect to spend on this. These are the items that you can be expecting from us." And it requires the mayor's signature for submission. So we have, as staff, we have prepared the funding packet, and it's ready for submission to WashDOT. Looking forward, so that I mentioned before, we have the 4.8 million in connecting Washington funds for construction. We're planning to have local match with that and complete the northernmost remaining section and the southwesternmost. So those two are planned to be funded through this connecting Washington money. We are also applying for federal funds through the TRPC grant funding process that's going on now, hoping to fund the segment in between, that's sort of between the Valley Athletic Club and the other southernmost segment. So that is not a given, but you know, cross your fingers and think good thoughts, because that would be really wonderful to be able to complete that. And as a reminder, we're hoping that you will approve and authorize the mayor to sign the project prospectus, accepting 5.8 million in state funds for the Deschutes Valley Trail Connection project.
All right, any question? Councilmember Swarthout.
This time I do have a question. I thought, I remember some funding that we had once before with, through the state, that we had like a million. Is it, the million you're talking about, is that the one that we already had obtained several years ago, and we were just waiting to do it?
Yes, this money, from what I understand, has been around for quite a while. I believe that it's before I started working here, and I've been here just over five years. So I don't know the exact date when they said they would give us this money, but we finally get it. Yay.
Yay, very good.
All right, any other questions? All right, do I hear a motion? We're all in summer mode today. Did you want to?
I can make the motion if you'll put it back up again.
Yeah. There you go.
Oh, see, I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the project prospectus, accepting 5.8 million in state funds for the Deschutes Valley Trail Connection project.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout and seconded by Councilmember Althouser. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, the motion carries. Next item is the Service Provider Agreement for the Second Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project with SCJ Alliance. And we have a different presenter now, thank you. All right.
So, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Today, I'll be speaking on the Second Avenue Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvement Project. And what we're looking for today is authority to sign a service provider agreement with the consultant for design services. So I wanted to do a quick overview of the entire project. This project has kind of two main components. The first component is our improvements on Second Avenue. Those improvements start at B Street, and they go all the way to Linwood. So it's a pretty big area, about 3,000 linear feet of roadway. And I'll talk a little more about the improvements that will occur there, but it's pretty much full width roadway renovation for that. The second component is the improvements to the Linwood and Second Avenue intersection. So as most of you know, this is a pretty difficult intersection in the city, has a lot of congestion. And it's at a, it's at a kind of an odd angle, so it's kind of difficult to improve. So we worked in the conceptual stage to come up with something that would work for this particular intersection. And what we're looking at is kind of a modified roundabout, so it's kind of a elongated roundabout for that actual particular location. What you're looking at right here is just conceptual, so we'd be refining those details when we hit the site. So from an improvement standpoint, this project is noted on our transportation improvement plan. It's also on our current CFP. For the improvements on Second Avenue, the main, the big part of those improvements will be repairing the distressed pavement on Second. So Second's actually in pretty bad condition, hasn't been worked on in a long time. So it has a lot of repair areas that we'll have to deal with. It also potentially has some concrete panels underneath the roadway, which is causing the roadway to, you know, fail in different locations. So part of the project would be removing the old concrete panels, very similar to how we did on the Capitol Boulevard project. That reduces cracking and other issues down the road. And then eventually a final overlay for the entire project, for the entire roadway. We're not really widening the road, we're just going to keep it pretty much the same size as it is today. We're going to replace the sidewalk with new ADA compliant sidewalks. Most of the sidewalks in that area are pretty narrow, they're at least four feet, sometimes a little bit narrower. So we're going to get that pretty consistent all the way through the project site. Upgrade the ADA ramps, because I don't think there's really a ramp on that road that's ADA compliant. So part of the project will be to make them ADA compliant, or get them as close, what we call maximum extent feasible, get them as close to ADA compliant as we can, just due to the grades out there. And then in the end, we're going to have bicycle facilities.
Michael, did you have a question on that? Yeah, in terms of widening the sidewalks, the sidewalks that go underneath the highway there and the overpass are, like, that's probably one of the complaints I get most frequently about this particular area, is how narrow those sidewalks are, because you're really right with the traffic there, and with how popular the distilling center is. The only way you can really reach there, if you live anywhere on that side of the highway, is by walking underneath.
Are you talking about Linwood?
Yeah. Is there, is there a plan to widen those sidewalks at all under the highway? You're obviously more constrained because you're under a highway.
Well, our project starts on B Street, so I think, are you talking about up north?
Linwood.
Yes, absolutely.
This project is funded through Safe Rides to School. So it is primarily focused on connecting those residential areas north down to the, Michael Simmons? Yeah, Michael T. Simmons, yeah, the school there. So it does not go under the I-5. But I'm happy to hear that, I mean, not happy, but I'm, I'm taking that information with me as I'm looking for funding in the future. Because that would definitely be a good place to have another project.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, so that'll be, so in the end, we're going to have, you know, ADA compliant sidewalks and ramps and bicycle facilities for both sides of the roadway, like I said, from B Street all the way to Linwood. And then we're going to be doing stormwater upgrades, because right now it's kind of limited on how, the stormwater system's kind of older, and it needs some upgrades, and we probably will be providing some infiltration, water quality, and some quantity control. So that's pretty much the main, the main component of the Second Avenue project, or the roadway work on Second Avenue for the intersection at Second Avenue and Linwood. Like I mentioned, we'll be looking at a roundabout to replace the existing four-way stop. And, you know, the biggest advantage to that roundabout is it's going to increase vehicle capacity and reduce delays and reduce congestion. It will make a dramatic difference in your ability to move through that intersection. And most importantly is the enhancing the multimodal safety at the intersection, which is really providing better access from pedestrians and bikes to navigate through that intersection. Because right now, it's a little bit dicey if you're trying to walk that or ride a bicycle through it. And then again, stormwater improvements for that portion of the, of the improvements as well. From a consultant design standpoint, we have SCJ Alliance as our prime consultant, Sage Geotechnical doing our geotechnical analysis, Mountain and Coast for our topographic survey interior right-of-way to provide any right-of-way services that we need. All of those consultant firms are local in our area. Our design scope is pretty basic. Normal design scope for a roadway project, or like I said, our topographic survey, our geotech investigation for both our pavement analysis and then our stormwater component, our permitting, which really on this project is probably SEPA and stormwater general permit, it's probably about as far as it'll go. Preparation of our design plan, specifications, cost estimate, and then also construction support services from the design group, you know, when we get into construction, if we need any help there. Design schedule, looking at about 10 months to complete the design for the project and get to a final PS and E package ready for bid. Design costs for this project, so the agreement we're talking about today, the the service provider agreement has a total design consultant fee of $637,516.43. From a fiscal standpoint for the overall project, the total project estimate is about 4.2 million. And then it's broken down, down below Wash Dot Safe Routes to School is 2.1 million. These are all generally approximate. Transportation Benefit District, 0.8 million. Private Development Funding Through Impact Fees, 0.8 million. And then Transportation CFP Ending Fund Balance at 0.5 million. So that was all. And I did, I'll just start up here. I did. I did include another slide real quick. That this is an example of kind of what it would look like. It was the closest one that we could find. So it's kind of a more elongated, stretched out roundabout by the time it's done. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, so when reading this, it says, you know, upgrades to existing ADA sidewalk ramps. When we have these opportunities, do we have like, not a repository, but like a list of community members who use mobility devices to see if where the current locations are actually beneficial or useful or accessible? Like, what feedback do we have that these are actually in the right place?
Can you help me with that? Because that's really kind of Mary Heather's wheelhouse.
So the good news is that we do have contacts with members in our community. But there's also the idea that they're not going to be traveling if if there is no access. So we're going to put access everywhere. And so anytime there's a crossing, it needs to be accessible to everyone. So or we have to say, no one can cross here. So for this project, what we'll be doing is every single place that there's you need to be able to get down from the sidewalk, there will be a ramp that you can get down from the sidewalk. So hope that answers.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Like I said, that that can be a little problematic in places where there's a difficulty.
You're in between, so how?
Well, yeah, for the the grades. You know, if Second Avenue, all of the all of the neighborhood is higher than Second Avenue. So a lot of those roadways are really steep, heading right out of Second, and you can't really change the grade of the road. It's just there's no way to do it. So usually what we do is we run that ramp out as far as we can and try to limit it as best we can to get the best ADA accessibility that we can.
I have a question.
Councilmember Agabi, and then I'll go to councilman Resortow.
So currently at that roundabout, at that junction, it functions as a four-way stop sign. So you come and I go, and then you go. So if you put an elongated roundabout, doesn't that kind of narrows passage from north and south because the elongated side, the roundabout is going to go sideways?
Not sure if I.
So currently, if you put a circular roundabout, you create more space to go around and elongate it sideways, go sideways.
What do you mean for people going to trying to get around? Those are all components of the design. So I think what's your, if what if I'm thinking about it correctly, you know, roundabouts are designed to reduce that ability for someone to go around. Based on the size of the roundabout. I mean, these are design parameters that are included in a roundabout.
So how big is it's going to be then, the elongated side, I mean, roundabout?
That's part of the design. So there there's all kinds of components when it goes into roundabout design and it can be from a geometric standpoint, it can be pretty complex in determining, you know, fastest path, you know, the all the all the radiuses, you know, how wide the roundabout is, how big the island is. So all of those things are kind of in the component of the design process to weed that out. But you are right, if a roundabout is built with too wide of a lane, if it's too too wide, then you can have other issues with people trying to drive around.
All right, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Resortow.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I was curious if we have like any, I know it was difficult to get through that intersection, but I was just curious that we have any data on the accidents at that intersection. And then also to just want to compliment you on how clever this design is. That intersection's been begging for something, so it's it's neat to see that you're thinking outside the box. And I think about what on Marvin Road up and up in Lacey when they did the reconfigured the traffic up there to get on I-5. It's just, you know, thinking outside the box. So I appreciate what we'll come up with.
And thank you, that's team team effort on the thinking outside the box. Yeah, I'm not sure about the crash.
So you've given me a great test. I did pull the information when I was doing the grant application, but do I remember that tonight? No, I do not. So I'd be happy to look it up for you. There, I think that that intersection, while it is quite uncomfortable for people, it is it's awkward to drive through that intersection as it is now. We are generally all at very low speeds. So it has been not any sort of severe crash history there. And the awkwardness makes us more cautious, so I think that helps us to avoid as many crashes, but I'd be happy to look it up and get back to you, councilmember Resortow.
Councilman Von Hulz.
Thank you, Mayor. I will say that this is my least favorite intersection in Tom Water. So I am really excited about this project because as much as people say that people don't know how to use a roundabout, I'm I question whether people know how to use a four-way stop. So I'm very excited about this project.
It will make a big difference in the ability for the for that intersection to function. I mean, to be honest, that intersection, either either you're talking to traffic signal or a roundabout, either one of those two, in order to actually make that function the way it needs to. This will be a big improvement.
All right, so yes, go ahead.
Sometimes with roundabouts, one of the concerns is like, will a fire apparatus be able to navigate it well? But it sort of seems like in this case where you, at peak traffic times, you have long lines on single roadways that build up at those stop signs, that this would actually probably improve flow for an apparatus to be able to make it through. Is that right?
Yeah, that's, there's two parts to that. The first one is is that more than likely this roundabout won't have a like a central island feature. It'll probably have maybe a dual height island so that a larger vehicle, if it had to get through, for example, fire truck or something, which we run templates for all of that when we do the design, they'll be able to mount the central island to get through the roundabout. The secondary component, which is really, it's kind of a public issue. It's, you know, when an emergency vehicle is coming up behind you in a roundabout, you're supposed to clear the roundabout. So that's the the general concept is you're supposed to move through the roundabout and then park on the other side and then wait for the emergency vehicle to go through. So that's kind of an issue that you always have with roundabouts is that sometimes people don't know what to do. But generally speaking, that's the the proper way to deal with that is to move through the roundabout. And usually the emergency vehicles know that that's an issue and they'll they'll make it known people need to move through, so.
And I would just say, I'll also add, this is practically in front of T2, so I'm sure they'll have a lot of input into
Absolutely, yes.
So any other questions? All right, anyone willing to make the motion?
I moved to, thank you, moved to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with SCJ Alliance for Design Services. I'll second.
It's been moved by councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by councilmember Von Hulz. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? All right, thank you. Thank you, Bill. All right, next item is the as you can tell, just for the people in the audience, why we have all these things, we're going to be on recess here shortly. So we have a whole bunch of business we need to get done before we go on recess because I'm sure people are going, why are they doing all this? Next one is service provider agreement for the Tom Water Boulevard Northbound I-5 On-Off Ramp Intersection Project with HDR Engineering.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I am one of your engineers downstairs, Joe, first time. Nice to actually be here talking to you.
You're doing great, Joe.
Thank you. I'm here for the same reason that Bill was. We're requesting council authorizes the mayor to sign the service provider agreement with our consultant HDR Engineering for Design Services. So this project is included in our transportation improvement plan and the CFP. We're looking at putting in a roundabout at the intersection at the northbound side of I-5 and Tom Water Boulevard. The roundabout is there to provide multimodal safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, increased vehicle capacity, increasing our left turn safety movement and accommodating our future development. The problem that we have with the intersection as it is now is that the left turns don't have enough gap time between people moving east and west to make that turn safely. So they end up waiting longer times and that backs up that queue. So we're hoping to alleviate that with putting in a roundabout. Now, this is part of a larger overall project for the interchange. Our future design phases will be for the southbound side to do these same kind of treatment and also to widen the overpass. For our current project that we're asking for, it's just for the design and construction on the northbound side. Our consultant design team consists of HDR Engineering as our prime consultant, our design sub consultants, our Sage Geotechnical, and Sitsin Hill Engineers doing our topo survey work. The design scope is very similar to that of the previous project and is similar, except for the addition of all of the work with Wash Dot. Because we are affecting the ramps, we need a lot of Wash Dot approvals going forward. So that was added into our scope. We still include our survey or geotech work to determine our infiltration rates and all the permitting, design and construction support for the project. The design cost for a consultant is $816,453. The project is totaled at 5.92 million as our estimate. 2.25 million comes from the Transportation Improvement Board, or TIB. The remaining 3.67 million comes at a 6535 split between private development and the transportation CFP Ending Fund Balance. And that's all I have for you. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking at the, I was just curious on the the term, when do you expect them to start and what's the expected completion date on this?
Yeah, so as soon as we get the signed service provider agreement, they will begin doing all their reconnaissance work. And the total contract is for 14 months.
14 months, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. Oh, I am moved that we authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for Design Services. This is another of my least favorite intersections.
I'll second. It's a member of Von Hulz.
Do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry.
So I did a little commentary after.
It's been moved by councilmember Von Hulz, seconded by councilmember Dahlhoff. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, we will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And our last item on this list is the Community Human Services Program Home Repairs. And this will be coming from Troy. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Okay, so we've talked about this one a few times and we're finally coming to the finish line or the starting line, depending on who you are. So this started as a budget request for senior home repairs. We are doing a $25,000 pilot program aimed at Tom Water Residence. This was approved, the money was approved with the last budget amendment. And we talked about this recently at a council council work session on May 28. And you provided direction to staff and we are going with rebuilding together. So before you tonight is a contract amendment to add that funding. We know they're an excellent organization. They have a local office. They do all the they take care of all the requirements for qualifications so that staff doesn't have to do that. And the great thing about them, especially for low-income seniors, is there's no shared cost requirement, no sweat equity requirement. And they, while they generally do smaller projects, they can do larger ones if needed. The only change since we had this before you last time is rebuilding together requested a 10% de minimis overhead to be able to charge to to this. That's very similar to most federal grant programs, and I thought that was pretty reasonable ask. And so that's included as well. So the action tonight is to authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment with rebuilding together.
All right, councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Troy. First, I love this program. So I support it. The one question I was thinking about is as you're working with rebuilding together, right, and it's specified who qualifies. Is there a way to communicate with them for people who request services, but they aren't qualified under the conditions, so we could track that to see the need? Since this is a pilot, if there's going to be discussion if we should continue this based on the need, is there a way to communicate with them of tracking and showing numbers of who's requesting and how many they're able to help versus how many they are not?
I I think we could do that. We've we've been emailing back and forth, so we we know how to get a hold of each other and so we could request that information or possibly even have them come back to present to tell us about the needs.
That'd be awesome. I just know because in the past conversations with rebuilding together, Thurston County and Southside Habitat for Humanity, they were talking together about a database of all the need and all the requests that they're unable to meet. So what could that look like? And even, I'm just thinking homes first as well, the people who are applying in the waitlist. I think a lot of jurisdictions that would could be helpful of determining where funding goes, but especially in Tom Water, if this is a pilot. I mean, I'd love to see this permanent and getting those numbers could help my case to request that it's permanent.
Data is always good.
All right, any other questions? All right, do I hear a motion? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to authorize the mayor, moved to authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment for rebuilding together. But do you finish the other sentence or is it?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by councilmember Agabi. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. So we have a lot of staff work to do here. This takes a lot of management to do all of these contracts and engineering items, so I appreciate all the staff's hard work, one, putting this all together, and two, the future work that'll be coming to their desks, so.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are now going to go to committee reports. So first one is Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Agabi.
So the Public Health and Safety Committee met on the night of this month. And we had a presentation from Thurston County Prosecutor John. And in his presentation, he talked about a whole update, but what he have note is the, he talked about they have a heavy case. heavy caseload of about three hundred and thirty caseload and those from COVID that's currently being worked on at this point in time. And he says that an average caseload, which is usual for them is around one thousand three hundred. And then he talked about, um, that they are currently, um, that they would currently hire interns who, who can apply to work pending, uh, passing their BIC exam. And then, uh, one of the biggest item that he talked about is, uh, a case that is currently before the Supreme Court and that case has to deal with, uh, standard caseload. And I according to his presentation, if that were to pass, that would create a significant, um, caseload and because of that, he said, so let me back up for a minute here. So currently because of the abundance of, uh, media services, they have about two terabyte of evidence per week and that's a lot of, uh, bites that they have to search through, analyze and then make a analysis upon. So if this, uh, case at the Supreme Court were to, uh, be, um, adjudicated, that would create a bigger impact on the amount of hours spent by the defense or the prosecutor on the case, on a case-by-case basis. And then, um, we also had a chiming for our in-house counsel Karen that says that, uh, this would be, this would double the cost for public defenders and this would probably affect us here at, uh, City Hall. And then, um, so, uh, we also have a reimbursement, uh, presentation regarding the Blake decisions. And, uh, if that, that also will also create, uh, an added cost for City Hall. So that is as much as I have for that presentation. So it was mostly about, uh, costing us money.
All right, uh, General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee has not met since our last council meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow and there are two substantive items on our agenda, both of which are related to our comp plan periodic update. We'll be discussing the climate element as well as the lands for public purposes and utilities elements. So that's our agenda for tomorrow.
Great. Um, Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthup.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we will be meeting on Thursday at eight AM and on our agenda we'll be, uh, we're receiving an update on the lot Deschutes Valley Properties purchase. Uh, will be, there's the Three Lakes Crossing Oversizing Agreement. There is the Small Works Contract for the Palermo Security Fence Replacement Project. An Urban and Community Forest Grant Acceptance Agreement with the River Network. Um, and Small Works Contract with Construction Incorporated for the Crosby House Foundation Repairs. So we'll see you at, right, eight AM on Thursday.
Great, thank you. Uh, and then Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting on July twenty-third at ten AM. Now we're going to move to the Mayor's City Administrative Report and we will start with Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I just have a few things tonight and the first one is, um, my pleasure to introduce to you our new communications manager. And I'm going to say his last name and it's going to either be right or wrong. And I will not be able to say it again, right or wrong, the next time. I'm so confused. Jason Wetstein? Stein, wait, Wetstein? Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm gonna, um, make myself some notes. So Jason Wetstein started July eighth. Um, he has a very impressive education, uh, background and I need to say that the background I gave you in the Friday update was wrong. Um, this is the correct one. He has a bachelor's degree from St. Cloud University in English Communications and International Relations. He has one master's degree from Georgetown University in Foreign Service and he has another master's degree from Evergreen State College in Public Administration. Um, his experience, most recently, he was the Communications Director, Director for the Washington Department of Children, Youth and Families. He's been the Communications Manager for Department of Fish and Wildlife. He was the Community Relations Manager for the Evergreen State College. Um, he was Marketing and Public Relations Manager for the Alaska Sea Life Center, which is a nonprofit organization. And he was Communications Officer for the Future Harvest Program, which is a program, um, of the World Bank. So we are very welcome, we are very excited to have Jason with us and I would like to welcome him and offer him a brief moment at the mic.
Hello, everyone. Hello, council. And, uh, I'm just really excited to be here and I think, um, since I came here, I've had the chance to talk about livelihoods, conservation, homelessness and overcoming that and, uh, just a lot about belonging. And, uh, this is what I was looking for. I was looking for a community where people could really engage with one another and engage with their city government. And so really excited to be here. I'm glad to be here and glad to have opportunity to work with all of you. So there are my brief remarks and, uh, there are questions, be happy to entertain them or move them forward.
Great. Thank you and welcome. All right. Oh, Councilmember Kathy, did you have a question?
I just had a comment, uh, for the young man. I, I, I'm impressed with all of the, his, his work, your, your broad background in e-education and so forth. And I think I'm coming to a new place. You are really at an advantage in coming among us because you have foreign service experience. So I just, I just want to welcome you to, to a new land here. So.
Well, I'd like to thank you for your diplomacy. Well, also calling me a young man, I'm, I'm excited. I'm really, really enthused with that as well. So, thank you.
Good.
Great, thank you.
All right, so just two other brief things. So your work session next week is not a joint session with the Planning Commission. Um, we've been having a lot of those, so it is, um, expected to be virtual only unless I get some direction from you all that you like the hybrid, um, option. Uh, we will have two guest presenters. So Annette Pitts with Olympia, Experience Olympia and Beyond will be here talking about the Destination Master Plan. And we're also going to be having Dr. Linda Perlez with, um, who's been helping us with our DEIB work. She's going to give you a briefing on our progress to date. Um, and then one, we, we are going to have one requested action item. The, there is an inter-local agreement with Thurston County for CDBG program funding. So previously, the inter-local agreement included both Tom Water, uh, Lacey and Thurston County. The timing is such that Lacey has chosen to become their own entitlement community. And this is a timeline that is set, uh, set by the, uh, CDBG program, the federal agency. Um, and so the inter-local agreement is required to be updated to reflect the two-party agreement versus the three-party agreement. It's essentially the same agreement. Um, although there's less money overall, there will be more frequent time that, uh, Tom Water has access to that money. Uh, county staff is expecting to have about three hundred thousand dollars per year less, but, um, Thurston County would get the funds in odd-numbered years and then Tom Water would get the funds in, uh, even-numbered years. There are three, three-year terms, uh, initially, uh, starting, um, immediately and then, um, an automatic renewal for another three-year term, uh, unless there is some sort of a sixty-day notice of termination of that agreement. The reason that we're asking for you to take action at a work session is because the county is required to provide the executed inter-local agreement and some associated, um, documents to the federal government by August fifteenth. Uh, we didn't actually have the meeting that the mayor attended last week, Friday morning, um, in order to be able to, um, make this decision moving forward. So apologies for asking that you do make that agreement. Um, but, uh, we are hoping to be able to get it to the county in, uh, to meet their timelines. The only other thing that I have then is, uh, a quick update on the Davis Speaker Oak Tree RFQ. Uh, we have received two proposals already. Um, both of them appear to meet the minimum qualifications in terms of the certifications that we've required, uh, in the RFQ. There are two more days, uh, for additional proposals to be received. Um, on, uh, Friday, we hope to select, uh, which of those firms we intend to interview. We will hold those interviews on the twenty-third and we hope to make a selection of the consultant, uh, to perform the second level three tree risk assessment on the twenty-fourth. And the goal would be to have the contracting process completed, um, by the end of the month, so they could begin their work in, in, in August. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Kathy. You're on, you have, you're unmuted, Kathy. Councilmember Kathy.
I'm having a hard time getting all my buttons pushed in time. I will have a question for the city administrator. So I'm just, I'm just curious about who is going to look through these, um, requests for an arborist for the, for the tree. Who is, who is selecting the arborist? Is a tree board or historic commission or anybody else in on this other than, the executive staff or staff members?
No, at this point in time, I'm reviewing them. Karen is reviewing them. The mayor is reviewing them and we will make a selection based on the interview process.
And then no one else will be on the interview process or anything?
We hadn't talked about that, no.
I think it's a good topic to talk about in, in, uh, in light of all of the community conversation that's been and even what we heard tonight about the historic commission not being, being there. I know. All, all of what's happened, I just think to err on the side of even if it takes an extra day or week or whatever to include the community in the final decision about who is going to make what we hope is the, is the correct final decision on, on the oak tree. So that's my comment. I, I, I just don't think it's wise to have it made by, I hate to say this, but some, some of you who've been most under the gun about this to be making this decision without any other input. So, uh, both a cautionary thing and I think the, a community.
Uh, I'll just add something to that, Councilmember Kathy. Um, this is for the actual, um, arborist report. This is not, we're not making the decision at this point of what, what the report says. These are the individuals with the highest credentials possible. And they were, uh, there is an RFQ. These, these particular arborists and companies come with caliber of predation and requirements as much as possible. So, uh, these are not just someone we're picking out of, you know, the landscaping, um, phone book. These are beyond, uh, these are, deal with these kinds of issues all the time. So these are the best of the best of the best that, that are applying for this.
I understand that. You just reviewed everything I've heard for weeks and months. I, I absolutely know exactly what you're doing. Uh, you know, as far as the, I agree that there, you, you were after the cream of the crop. I'm just saying, public perception of this whole issue to do with this tree is tremendously important. And I'm just offering this as, have you thought about it? Uh, should, should there be someone from the Historic Commission or the Tree Board or something that joins with you in, in, um, reading and or, um, interviewing? That's, that's all I'm saying. I understand the process and I understand who these folks, um, are. You know, like you say, top, top-level people. So, no, that, that's fine. I'm just putting that out there and, um, knowing that that's some of the hopes of the community. So. But thanks, Mayor. I, that was a, that's a good review to remind everyone who's, who we're, who we're talking about.
Great, thank you. Did you have a question?
I just was going to, um, follow up on Councilmember Kathy's comments. I'm going to put my media and public relations hat on and I, I would agree, I would think that if you maybe added someone from the tree board or the Historic Preservation Commission, that, um, would probably go a long ways with community members who have been critical of the process.
Thank you. Great, thank you. All right, that's it?
That's all I had.
Perfect. All right, so, um, since we didn't have a whole lot of things going on, uh, the only meeting I've actually attended was, uh, I have not attended any of the normal meetings assignments, but I do have an intercity transit authority board meeting tomorrow night. Uh, they're meeting earlier this week because it was the third of July, they chose to cancel. Uh, I want to say thank you again to staff for a great turnout and amazing work that they did for the, for all the Fourth of July events. Uh, and then, um, I did attend estuary meeting and, and, uh, Councilmember, um, uh, uh, Althouser and, uh, Mayor, uh, Park, uh, City Administrator Parks also joined it. So there'll be a lot more information. I know, it's been a long day. Uh, there'll be a lot more information coming down. We're trying to get to that final agreement of who does what with the estuary, the port. I mean, it is really big and complicated to try to get this processed. So you're going to be receiving a lot more information on this. We're just trying to get to that nitty-gritty of who does what. And really, when I look at the big picture compared to what the port and the, and the harbor, um, marinas have to do and a lot of others, we're pretty, it's pretty easy for us. So I, I appreciate that. I also wanted to let, uh, everyone know about the ribbon cutting for the roundabout ceremonies on the twenty-fourth. And since we're not having any more council meeting or not having council meetings the first part of August, um, please remember to come to the Brew Fest on August seventeenth. That's one of our, also one of our big festivals. So with that, I will turn it over to, uh, I will turn it over to Councilmember Reports. Um, Councilmember Von Holtz, do you mind starting?
I don't mind starting. Um, the only meeting that I've attended is Public Health and Safety and Councilmember Agabi gave a great report on that already. So.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Gaby.
So, I, um, I was down in Maryland past four days and all you have to do is step away from home and see what you don't have at home. So the report I'm going to give is, uh, Thurston County Transportation Board. I attended this meeting on the tent and after that I went to the airport in the afternoon. So at that meeting, we talked about, uh, I five extension, pulling an HOV link, sort of, uh, HOV lane from, uh, JBLMS to, uh, Mansfield. And I thought, oh yeah, they're going to make an HOV lane. And then I got to Maryland. See, I don't know how we got to where we are in the Northwest, but over there, there are several freeways that will take you north, east, west. So when I got a car into the guy said to me, don't drive, we're going to go to New York. I said, why am I going to New York? So I came out, I said, oh, New York, one twenty miles. I'm, oh gee, all right. Pennsylvania, this, this, I, this is. So what I'm saying is this, right, on a Sunday afternoon, starting from one oh one to two, exit one eleven, it is solid backup, back to back. And then you go from there to Tacoma and then I, uh, kind of sort of free and then you get to Tacoma. By the way, it's all solid back to back until you get to, um, the ball exit. That's a long, long way to drive to backup. Makes you wonder how here in Washington state, how we actually have cars going left and right. It, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be like that. It is, uh, it's appalling. But in any, in any case, it is where we find ourselves. So I wish somebody would do something about that. So, um, at this particular meeting that we have on the tent, there was a proposed amendment to twenty twenty-four Regional Transportation Improvement Program, again, Regional Transportation Improvement Program. It's not really improving anything. So. staff proposed amendment to the Regional Transportation Improvement, the R T, and requested amendment to include the following project. Thurston County SR five four seven, Bay Road, Southeast Roundabout, which the Policy Board approved. I don't know where SR five four five four seven will take you. I don't even know where that is.
Yeah.
So and then uh, there's an update that I briefly mentioned, uh I five joint base McCord and Mans Road to Tumwater. For the life of me, I don't know how you put an HOV lane from uh Blues McCord to Mans Road and think, oh, yeah, you're going to get somewhere. You're not going anywhere. You're just gonna hurry up and join traffic. And then we talked about congestion management process. And uh, this is, this is a kicker. So they talked about staff about an overview of congestion problem and needs and open a discussion with the Transportation Board on whether safety should be removed as a focus area for the congestion management process. That's a mouthful. That really doesn't do anything. So anyhow, I'm done. That's my report.
I can tell all the people who've been traveling on I five lately. That's, thank you, Councilmember Gaby. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
I thank you for the opportunity to go after uh, Councilmember Agabi is a little feisty tonight. Um, my report is I have been in Australia and Bali for three weeks, and so I'm thankful to be back. And if you want to complain about traffic, go to Bali. That's it.
All right. Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The Regional Housing Council hasn't met, but we are meeting a week from tomorrow. Look forward to that meeting. And uh, as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, I did attend the Funding Governance Work Group meeting about estuary implementation in our draft ILA. The one thing I would add to that is as part of that process, there will be a lowering of Capital Lake from July twenty-second to July twenty-fifth. And that is in order to study some of the sediments and they'll be taking photography with drones of the lake during that time. So if you want a preview of um what that could look like, go go down to Capital Lake after Lake Fair, because the lake will be lowered. That doesn't happen very often. It's pretty interesting.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jefferson.
Um, I have no report, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Swartham.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. On uh, July twelfth, I attended the uh Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting along with Mayor Debbie Sullivan. And on our agenda, we discussed um the appointment of the twenty twenty-five State Legislative Subcommittee. So there are members from uh TRPC um that serve on this committee, and I volunteered to be on that committee this year. Uh, we had uh the TRPC Comprehensive Plan Review, um Guidance and Certification Process. Uh, we also had some discussion about the congestion management process. Um, and we had some uh people from uh, some of our people that also made some public comments about that. Their concern about changing the numbers. And so uh, we had a a good discussion about that and we'll be taking, I believe, action later on that. And we had um another presentation on the redistributed projects process for TRPC for the federal funding that's coming through for projects. And that's the Empire Report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have uh two quick things. Well, one, I didn't have a uh solid waste advisory council did not meet. Uh, but um, the solid, the uh Olympic Region Clean Air Agency did meet. And I just wanted to report for the uh community to remember, there is a burn ban that uh started on July the thirteenth and will go through September the thirtieth. Now, some people will wonder why we're making that in Tumwater, since this, we have a burn ban all the time in Tumwater for outdoor burning. And that means like burning of leaves or limbs or the things that you get from your yard or your field or anything, really. There's no, no outdoor burning in Tumwater. And also there is no outdoor burning in the UGA area. So I just want to remind people of that, that uh, and they're using this uh time to kind of emphasize for people to get organic bins. Previously, you know, the bins there for your yard waste, they're now calling them organic bins uh since they carry not only your yard waste, but also your garbage, garbage waste and and organic materials. So just want to remind, remind people, don't decide, well, I'll just do this little pile of leaves here. I'll just burn them. Uh, no, no. Don't do that in Tumwater or any of the three cities nor the UGA area. Somebody will smell them and we'll call for death. You'll be in trouble. So that's uh, that's my report.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, we have completed all the reports. Um, just a reminder, we have a work session next Tuesday and then we will have a three-week um break and then we will be back in the middle of August. So with that, we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you.